Call to order, the City of Sagatuck City Council meeting for December 23rd, 2024. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Jamie, will you call the roll?
Anderson.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
Dean.
Here.
Gardner.
Here.
Muncie.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Stanton.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Great, thanks, Jamie. So, you know, I'm just to take a minute with some opening comments about what a great year we've had. With almost either unanimous or close to unanimous votes, we have really gotten a lot of great stuff done. We hired a new city manager, a new staff members, have a new playground, got a lot of sort of day-to-day infrastructure work done, plus a good start in funding for the lead pipe replacements and the Maple Street planning, funding for trails and parking and the conservation easement at the airport property, twice monthly recycling wifi at Oval Beach, new SDR policies and ordinances. I mean, it's been a great year, so go City Council and staff, and thank you. I think we have a lot to build on for 2025, and I'm excited about what lies ahead. So, I just wanted to start off on a good note. City Manager?
Yeah, well, thank you, Mayor, and thank you for pointing out some, you know, a good year. It's hard to believe, it's already the end of December, and your last meeting in December. And then, you know, right away, we're going to be kind of going into next year and grouping up and planning for next fiscal year's priorities, so we can start, you know, working on preparing that budget and that sort of thing. And as a reminder, that's going to be January 24th. The City Clerk today put out that community survey based on your feedback on the survey questions. Appreciate that, so that'll be open for a few weeks. We do have paper copies available here at City Hall, notices going in the paper soon, so we really encourage folks to fill that out. The audit is nearly 100% done, I mean, the draft is to City Staff. We had to get a, just do our review and sign some forms to get them back to our auditors, but for all intents and purposes, the audit's done, and they're going to be at your January 8th workshop to present the findings of the audit. So, some good news, you know, on the financial front, essentially, you know, we ended up with adding to the fund balance by $400,000 last year, which was well over what you had budgeted for and anticipated. So, some good news on that front. The Wildlife Management Survey is out as well, so I'll let folks know about that. So, a couple of really good opportunities on the survey front. Other than that, I just want to, yeah, thank all of you for a wonderful year. I was thinking back, and I know I think officially signed an agreement with the council in June after going through your search process, but it was late January or February when you named me as your interim manager. And so, it's been nearly a year, but I really appreciated working with everybody this past year. I've learned a lot, I've enjoyed getting to know each of you and your styles and your feedback, and everything's been extremely helpful, and I really appreciate all of you for a great year, and hope everybody has a great Christmas and a good holiday season.
Thanks. Any agenda changes?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I would request that we change on the consent agenda, 9C, which is the grand application for the Park Street corridor. I'd like to move that over to 14D. I think that it's a, there's a lot of authority that's given to the committee, and they're making decisions on eliminating options that the City Council won't even see then. And I think that it should be a study group of the City Council looking at that. If you turn to page 68, or excuse me, 28, some of the examples, make revisions and enhancements based on the feedback received from them, meet with the P, make the updated conceptual plans and costumet, prioritize items. I think for a non-elected board to be making those decisions is not good. I'd rather that we at least come up with a small study group to look into this. Park Street is a big, a big issue.
Okay, so, well, just so your motion, those are wish, is to move 9C out of consent agenda?
Yes.
And it would become what again?
14D.
So, and I'll second that. It's our new business.
All right.
Yeah, I want to move 9C to 14D was the motion.
All right, and that's a voice vote, or Jake? Okay. Got it, okay.
Thank you.
All right, anything else? Any guest speakers tonight? Doesn't look like it. Public comment on agenda items only, any, Dan?
Excuse me, I'll get up later for the Fire Board, but I just wanted briefly on, comment on 9-
Give your name.
Dan Fox, sorry. Elizabeth Street. Comment on 9D, the board reappointment, so I guess it's 9DB. The Jane Verplank's reappointment of the Fire Board is in front of you tonight for a vote, I assume. And I just wanted to say, Jane's been, I don't know how long she's been on the Fire Board. She's been on the Fire Board as long as I've been on the Fire Board.
Twelve years.
Twelve, so that's like two six-year terms. She's Chair of the Fire Board, which you know, that's an elected chair, elected by the Fire Board members. It's not an appointed position, so. And Jane has been, in my judgment, and I think, you always hate to speak for other people that you haven't actually polled, but I speak for the rest of the Fire Board, I'm pretty much certain, in hailing her abilities to guide us and through some challenging and difficult times, some which, number which took place before I was ever involved, but I heard of them, and some of them were still going on when I got there. So, she has been, she's been a real asset to that board, and I just wanted to officially say that, thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Anyone online? All right, we will move on then to the consent agenda, knowing that we have moved out nine, or, yeah.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
A motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Any discussions or questions? All right, it's a roll call vote.
Anderson?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Muncie?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to staff reports. Any further questions for the City Manager? Or on the clerk, treasurer report? Clerk's report? Planning and zoning? DPW? Don't think we had anything from the Sheriff's Office?
No.
Or anything on the engineer's report? All right, that takes us to boards, commissions, and committees, Dan?
Dan Fox, again, Council Representative to the Fire District Administrative Board. This is the report on our board meeting last Monday, so the 16th, a few slides and then brief demonstration, if you'll indulge us. First one, please. Here we have the common dashboard showing incidents which continue to be, to run at an all-time high. I'll show you another slide on that. Response times, again, up a little bit from last time, but well within what is considered a reasonable range. Types of calls, again, EMT calls, it's 61% of all calls, emergency medical calls at 61% is the greatest, highest category of calls for service. And then finally, in the lower, far left, the breakdown of the calls by municipality for the year. And you see Sagatuck there at, what, 23%, which is about in line with demographics and so forth. Next one, please, Jamie, and this is the one I mentioned, in terms of the, the record calls for service for the year, the green boxed items on the chart over the years, that represents the highest month recorded for that particular month, highest number of calls over the course of the chart here for 10 years. And you can see how many of those green boxes are landing, have landed in the current year, which is obviously why we are at an all-time high dramatically. So, and oddly, just as the red boxes are the lowest number of calls, all of those are toward the bottom, so that indicates this general increase in calls for service over time. Next one, please, Jamie. These are life's, life ambulances, emergency responses through November. Life, as you know, has been the contracted ambulance service since June. And again, down a little bit prior year, which is good. Next one, please. Can you, yeah, thank you, oops, yeah. These are the wait times for the EMS, for the life EMS ambulance arrival for the different geographies, Sagatuck North and South being the two with the arrows there. The percentage shown, the on the far right, the down percentage is a percentage versus the up to the previous, to the end of the previous contractor's performance. So, that wasn't the primary reason that change was made, but it's gratifying to see that those are headed, have headed in that direction. Next one, Jamie, here's where we'll get to our, to our little demonstration. This, each month, I've tried to bring one chart, I mean, we get a stack of charts this big, but I've tried to bring one chart that's elucidating on some point of general or specific interest. And this is, this was a new chart this month. The relates to cardiac arrest incidents, these, this data has to be, has to be tabulated to satisfy the requirements of the Aligan County Medical Control. So, again, you can see for the current year, total of, a grand total, I think of seven, grand total of seven incidents. You'll also see, this is, I don't think finalized, because the number of patients that were deceased at the scene is not, is not yet reflected in there for the, for the current month. The, in the blue areas off to the left, it shows whether the Lucas device, which I'll more in a few minutes, when it was used, when it was available on standby, when it was actually deployed, used on a patient, and then the iGel, when the iGel device was, was available on standby, and when it was actually deployed. When I saw this, I said, the first time I saw this report this month, I said, I know what the Lucas device is. I didn't know what the iGel device was, so I asked, and, and Greg explained to me what they were. When he told me what the iGel device was, I said, you can stop telling me now, because I'm getting lightheaded just hearing what it is. So, he called me yesterday, I think, maybe today, and volunteered Riley Capell on the right, Kevin Stevens on the left, stopped by their own duty, to show you what those two devices are, so that you kind of just know such things are available. And these are, these ride on the Fire District's trucks, they're probably also on the EMS life truck ambulance as well, but they're the trucks that arrive within the seven minutes, so. I asked him to, I asked him to step in the middle here, because on the, on the video, you don't see anybody, you only see people's heads, so I said-
I'm starting to ram the bells, Kevin Stevens, just to clarify, cardiac arrest is when there's no pulse, no breathing. So, no heart activity at all. Our CPR machine is our device that you set back on our name of the patient, and then you connect the device up, and it will do automatic compressions for us. It relieves us of those, we need once we get that setup established, where we can move on to something like an iGel. An iGel is a super-godic airway that we use to slip down in, it'll block off at the esophagus, and it will allow for us when we use our ventilation, our BVM, and force air into the, right into the lungs, and that's how we'll breathe our patient. So, I'll let you guys just pass that around.
Not been used, right? Not been used, right?
And that goes on the back, and so this is covering the patient, right? So, he's in between there.
The patient would be laying on this.
Right.
And then this would be over top of them, like their chest area, and then you'd run the plunger up like straight between the nipple line.
Right.
And then you would allow it to do its compressions.
Oh, yeah, stand alone, stand alive.
You have something bigger than that. Okay, have you ever come into a situation where that wasn't big enough?
So, you'll get like pediatrists, where they'll be installed in the machine.
Okay.
And then obviously, your babies and your VMAs will have-
Right, that too, yeah.
And then we'll also get obese patients, where they, this will not fit, and so we'll be back to the old school of manual compressions.
Yep, very cool.
And that goes through man part pretty quick. Normally, if we're doing manual compressions, well, as soon as you hop on the chest and do compressions, we're about two minutes, and we'll want to switch. Because the longer you keep going, more tired you get, the less compressions, and kind of get that heart recoil, trying to get that blood back pumping through the heart, we want to make sure that we're doing good quality CPR, which, this is where this comes into play for us.
That's cool.
That's neat.
Yeah.
How many of the, pardon me, how many of the machines does the department have?
We have two.
Two.
How much do those cost, about?
Thirty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Wow, thirty-five grand?
Very blessed to have two of them, and one of the good use, and we've got some days with them, so.
That's great, that's great.
I can see that one's got a loving memory of Joseph.
Yes.
Oh, Joe Costello, oh, yeah, I knew Joe.
Can, can you leave that device in place when you're getting out the AED? And so you could administer a shock via the AED while that, while that continues to operate? You'll pause it, okay.
As soon as that shock is done, it will restart again.
But it won't interfere with the analyzing for a rhythm or that, okay, great, great.
Fantastic, yeah, yeah, thanks for showing it to us.
Really cool.
Yeah.
Gregory, pass the thing around.
Yeah.
So, that iGel, does that, is that actually intubated?
Yes. And if nobody actually touches it, you can, we'll swallow it.
Show them how. Thanks for the handy hint.
Nice, nice friends you have.
Let's check to see if this sucker works. Well, Dan, who's the oldest? Who's the oldest here?
Thanks, Kevin. No, you're good.
Appreciate it.
When this comes around, then, do you actually do lip to lip, or do you have a thing that fits over that?
We'll have a BVM mask that will connect to the top of that, and then we'll be able to- There's no more mouth mouth, no more-
Cool, thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. Love showing time.
I'm good.
Thank you.
Thanks again. In my last three or whatever it is slides, I forgot, I can't remember how many. Yeah, here was some of the other stuff we talked about. We will be adding, Fire Board will be adding first Monday workshop meetings all of next year. We've got a lot of sort of major things to discuss and work our way through, and just felt like, rather than running along on the regular meetings, be smarter to add these. We can, you know, we can obviously cancel one or more if they don't, if they're not needed. We, the Fire District's annual financial audit, basically, the audit of Peter's work for the Fire District is completed, and that report is in our hands, and makes for annoying reading, but it was a good, a good audit. Without divulging too many details that would get us in trouble, there was a particularly challenging incident the Fire District had this past month, month of November, where they were, they had responded, actually, with these guys, with this truck outside, responded at a restaurant where a woman was, was having severe breathing difficulty. She was outside the restaurant, it was very cold outside, truck pulled up for a couple of reasons, that's one of the reasons they like having that truck, they wanted to get the woman inside. One, because it was very cold outside, which doesn't help you when you're trying to breathe and catch your breath. The other, because when you're standing out in the open or lying out the open, there's sort of HIPAA issues about what's being done to the person, you got potential people standing around with cell phones and goofing around and whatever. So, anyway, they were waiting, and in the process of getting her inside, the fire truck parked on a shared driveway. And would, and the, the fire officer at the scene was accosted by one of the owners of the adjacent property screaming, you're, you're, you're violating the easement. Emergency vehicles don't have to pay attention to any of that. I mean, if your house is on fire, you want the truck pulling right up onto your lawn, the lawn's the last consumer. In any case, as a result of that, that particular location, location that you don't really need to know, and I couldn't tell you, I couldn't, they wouldn't let me tell you if I wanted to. But that location now has a standing order, when a 911 call goes to either of those two, the two businesses that are there, either one, there will be an automatic dispatch, not simply of the EMT people or fire trucks, whatever is called for, but also the sheriff will be dispatched to the same location. That's, they take it very seriously. We spent a long time, again, they hadn't, the Fire Board hadn't, all of them hadn't seen the video, which you all have seen, on the, on the, on the parade, on the Christmas parade. There were audible gasps in the Fire Board room when that video was shown. People, I mean, there were kids this tall, as close to the fire truck as I am to the end of my arm right now, and turned away from the trucks and looking the other way and wherever, it's, something's got to be done. It's, it's, it's an accident waiting to happen, I mean, it's over the top to talk about Magdeburg in Germany or whatever, but that's a danger, and somebody's going to get hurt, and when they, when they get hurt, they are in the risk of getting really hurt. It's a very difficult situation. In, in Douglas, they put the barricades out, you do not leave the sidewalk, traffic is, all parked cars are gone. It's not that big a deal, it's done plenty of places, from midnight on, no parking on Butler for these, whatever, just two or three blocks. It's very simple, but without that, you can understand, people can't see the parade, because there's a SUV or something parked there, so they go around the SUV, and at that point, they're this far away from some very big equipment, dangerous equipment. We have, one of the senior fire people will not participate, refuses to participate because of his fear that something just awful is going to happen, and he doesn't feel comfortable driving one of those trucks where you're way up there, anyway. And a second or third appeal on that, some point in time worth looking at. And finally, highway safety, can you go to the next slide, I think, may have jumped forward. This is the one I was referencing, you see the, see, see the little girl in the pink on the top photograph? How close she is to that dump truck? And, and all of those big pieces of equipment, they don't have great visibility from the inside, around them to the back. There are no, you know, cameras, there are no cameras in the rear like you have in your car and the rest of it. And then people crossing the street in the middle of the, in the middle parade, and that was a blocked corner. There were two DPW trucks blocking that, blocking traffic at that corner, and because the, because the parade slowed down, or there was a gap in the parade or whatever, then everybody starts crossing, and it's Katie bar the door. This is, this is highly unsafe, okay, we, enough said on that. Go ahead, this is the last one. That is the video you also saw, or stills from that video. The elapsed time from that top photograph to the bottom photograph is three and a half seconds. That's how fast that kind of stuff can happen, and it literally was, I mean, breathtaking. Enlarged photograph on the lower left, it really was a run-for-your-life situation. Those, those guys were standing at the top photograph alongside that truck, and as it was hit, they're still standing there, because you can't react that quickly. And then by the bottom, just after the last photograph was taken, the three of them are running off, three or four of them are running off to, off to the side. Yet again, one, we don't need more proof, the chief is thrilled that we've got that TMA truck, this was not our call, this was, this was Comstock. I think there, there may be one more slide, I can't remember, brain's going, yeah. And this is from, forget the, I mean, don't forget, but the, the human aspect of that, thank God, no one was seriously injured, and they could have been, guys could have been killed there easily. Somebody, I mean, the chief was killed on I-94 near Kalamazoo three years ago, in one of these situations. But from a material standpoint, that's, pick your number, replacing that truck is a $600,000 to $800,000 expense. Repairing it, which is probably what they'll do, is going to be maybe six months if you're lucky, maybe. You can't, you don't just take this up to the body shop, I mean, and you can see that front wheel is bent under, that means that axle's toast, the bodywork, the rest of it. So, not only do you have the expense of repairing this, fine, you'll probably get some help from insurance, but you got the time during which, whatever this vehicle's supposed to be doing, is going to have to be done by some other vehicle that I assure you is not as well-suited to doing it as this one is, because there wouldn't be two of them. So, it's, it's, it's a major risk to the fire service. That's it. Any, I have Merry Christmas to you all.
Merry Christmas.
Any questions or follow-up, feel free.
Yes.
Yeah, just Dan, a follow-up, I've continued to think about the concern around the parades. So, I mentioned it to American Legion Post 137's Post Commander, Mr. Boyce, at our December meeting. The Legion currently provides, you know, additional security at the Venetian event. There was some interest from the Post Commander and leadership at, at the Post of perhaps offering the Legion's services as parade marshals. You know, they earn income for the Legion's programs, you know, at the Venetian, you know, the Rotary pays them to provide security. There may be an opportunity for, you know, if somebody wants to do a parade, doesn't have the resources to provide marshals, that the American Legion, you know, would be available to be contracted for that. You know, we have members that are mobile and can act as marshals, and even the, the members that have mobility issues, it would give them an opportunity to participate as well by bringing their vehicles down and providing some of the blocking services. You know, these are all ex-service people, so they tend to understand, you know, rules of engagement and operating procedures. So, I don't know if, if Mr. Boyce has reached out to anyone at the Fire Department yet, but we did discuss it at our last Legion meeting, is a possible path toward a solution to this problem.
I think any help is going to be appreciated. I, I, I'm not, it was, it's the chief's point of view and the department, district's point of view, that getting the cars off the street will be the single greatest safety improvement you can possibly make. And yes, we're talking about however many cars that is, but it's done elsewhere, it's done at lots of elsewheres. You just post those signs and tell them if they're there at eight o'clock, and case around it, you know, the parades don't last, other than Fourth of July, they don't last that long, so you come back in after it, so. But yeah, I appreciate that, I don't, I, they should, you know, if they've got a specific thing, Greg will, by all means, be all ears. So, but yeah, I appreciate that. I don't, I, they should, you know, if they've got a specific thing, Greg will, we all, by all means, be all ears. Absolutely.
Anything else for Dan? Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Thanks for the demos. Gregory, interurban board.
Um, in November, we carried 4,069 passengers and that's 193 more than last November. Uh, we just, it sounded like a broken record, but our numbers keep going up. So every time I report about interurban, I just keep saying we've got more people riding. And we want to remind everybody that New Year's Eve, we have free service between 6:00 PM and 1:00 AM for safe rides home, and that's on the house. That'll be free. Our, working on our audit, our fiscal year 2024 audit will be finished in January. I will provide you with a copy as I do every year. And then on top of that, we were, I know we've talked about before about our one-way or one day going to South Haven. We're working on a contract with also Alleghan County Transportation, along with Van Buren Transportation to have a, a once a week ride to South Haven for our riders, much like we do our two-way Tuesdays for Holland. So I'm trying to think of a going south, something, some kind of cute little name for that. So that's neat. Gives folks that don't have transportation a way to get down to South Haven for, I don't know if they need medicines or doctor appointments or whatever, or, you know, grocery shopping. But other than that, everything's going great. And we've enjoyed Becky and the energy and the different ideas that she's bringing. Still working with Fendel about having transportation to and from Fendel. The thing about Fendel is that it takes one bus out of our area if it was on-demand service. So we, we're kind of like shooting towards like a shuttle service idea for Fendel. A lot of it has to do with money and what Fendel would offer to bring to the table. I don't know, you know, what, what their position is on, on bringing money to the table for that, but we'd like to see that too. So we've, since Becky's has been on, we've expanded our hours and we've sought out different ways of reaching even further with, with interurban. So that's where we're at. It's been a wonderful year. Becky took everybody out to dinner last Monday as a thank you, the whole board out. And unfortunately I couldn't make it. I was out of town that Monday evening. I had to go to town. But, but she's very, very happy and our employees are very happy with her as well with her first year. So we look forward to next year working with her.
Terrific. Thanks.
Thank you.
Ryan, anything from Cow Lake Sewer and Water beyond what you shared with us?
Yeah, I heard from Mr. Beckon and he indicated he didn't have anything additional to add besides the, you know, the report that Daryl had put together. So, but I told him if he had any questions, I'd be sure to bring them back. So.
Great. Any questions to pass on? All right. Chris, anything on the?
Next month.
All right.
Meeting, they're doing them quarterly, so it'll be the first meeting.
Great, thanks. Anything ZBA related?
Nope.
No meeting this month.
Okay, Russ in no historic district, correct?
Next meeting is Thursday, January 2nd at 6:00 PM.
All right. And anything from planning since we, I don't think so, since we met at the workshop. We, I know we have the.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, not, not a lot new. We'll be discussing in our new business, the
Right.
Waterfront Preservation District. Planning continues to work on, I think I mentioned in the last meeting, potentially allowing BMBs to incorporate accessory structures into their footprint. There's a lot of analysis we want to do just to make sure that we're making a fair recommendation to council so that nobody gets one benefit over the other and that it makes sense from a lot of coverage perspectives on and so forth. But we're making progress. Probably not as fast as people would like, but it's not just the case.
You know, right.
And we're, we're, in our next workshop, we'll be discussing recommendations from planning around ADUs as it pertains to short-term rentals, mainly existing ADUs, where we're finding that most, most of the applications coming in for STR permits are falling below the minimum size threshold. So we have some, we believe we've come to a pretty good consensus on what we'd like that to look like. So we'll be sharing that with you on our next workshop. We're working on next year's goals and priorities from that point of view. We would love to get some input from council. I mentioned our strategy session might be a good time for us to solicit input from everyone here on this, around this table on, you know, what they'd like to see planning focus on next year. Couple of ideas we have, I'll share with you then, but you know, basically trying to maybe even consolidate some of the, you know this from your past experience, right? Consolidate some of the zones around, simplify it a little bit. We're looking at updating master plan. Again, we know, I know from our last meeting, we had a lot of council discussion on whether, whether the city has their own master plan, how that rolls up into a tri-community plan. So more to come on that. We have a new deputy chair, CJ Bazurek, who was unanimously voted in. On the call. So I want to congratulate him and thank him for taking that role. And that's about it.
Great.
I, I watched the meeting as well. And I noticed that you, that you were talking about your long-term goals and that they were, you know, kind of waiting, you know, to, for our strategic meeting, you know, to see, you know, really what the council wanted. I think that when we think about the strategic meeting, you know, as we put that together, maybe have an idea of all of our committees and what our intentions are for them. I don't remember doing that last year, but I think maybe just a few minutes in that section. I just kind of want to add that real quick.
Thanks, Gregory.
Might be a good idea.
Yep. PPW.
Yeah, along the same lines, we talked about strategic planning as well and also wanting to wait until council meets. So PPW has direction on what we should be planning for the next year and wanting to hear from council because that's just the way it works is we take guidance from council. And so we're going to wait to have our strategic planning after city council has theirs. We will be electing a chair and vice chair in January. That's what our bylaws say. So that's what we plan on doing at the next meeting.
Great, thank you. The Tri-Community Non-Motorized Trail.
You'll see it flagged in the manager's report, but you know, the, the great thing that we have going on in Sagatuck is that it's a fantastic natural area. It's also extremely culturally significant to, to the tribe. And the designation a few years ago of it as a, a tribal cultural property, you know, comes with more due diligence around projects. We, we know this from the Bald Head Project. We've seen what's happened over at North Shore Development. You know, working closely with, with the tribal government is extremely important. And that is leading to delays on the Blue Star Trail project. You know, there is going to be more due diligence to make sure all the parties are comfortable with that. Nevertheless, everyone remains committed to the project. We continue to move forward. Will we see delays in 2025? It's quite possible that some phases or some aspects of the project will be delayed. There are some very sensitive areas that, you know, the, the tribe would like to a closer look at. And when you're dealing with state and federal funding, you need to be very mindful of, of all of these parties' concerns. So with that in mind, the group will be meeting again in January to, once again, you know, continue to work through this, make sure everybody's comfortable. And if I've, if I've overstated or understated any of it, Ryan, please.
Spot on.
Okay. So that's where we are. But projects, you know, funding's still there. You know, everyone's still committed to it, but we just really need to work closely in cooperability to make sure that all of the parties are very comfortable. We bring, bring forward the best project possible.
Great. Thanks. Questions for Scott? Okay, the, Russ, anything new on the water system?
We meet in January.
Okay. And anything new, Scott, on the Wildlife Management Committee?
Next meeting will be February 5th. We will not meet in January. We're going to let the survey continue to generate responses up until the 31st of January. So that, that survey's out. I urge everyone in the community to complete the wildlife survey. When we meet in February, we are hopeful to have maybe a representative from the Fire Department. I had a very good conversation and correspondence from Mr. Fox. They have some interest in supporting our work on getting some baseline numbers on the deer herds using the Fire Department's drone and its thermal imaging equipment. So we're going to try to see if there's a way we can come up with a little project to get some baseline data on the tri-communities, the scope of this tri-communities deer issue, if you will. So next meeting in February.
Great.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, that takes us to the approval of accounts payable on, on page 63.
Mayor motion to approve the accounts payable in the amount of $353,955.44.
Roll call vote?
Any discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Any discussion questions? I was prescient on my part. Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Muncy?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Great. No public hearings, no unfinished business, which takes us to new business, 14A, which is on page 65, the waterfront preservation ordinance. Luke, do you want to do a brief recap?
Hello again. I am. I'm back in front of you to present the proposed amendments to the Downtown Waterfront Preservation District. The Planning Commission believes these changes are crucial to safeguarding public access to the boardwalk and has recommended the following. Removal of first floor apartments as both permitted and special uses. Clarification of PUD guidelines to ensure consistency and clarity. Restriction on height modifications to maintain the district's visual integrity and preservation of public access through the PUD process with legal safeguards. Following the workshop on December 18th, we've also added clear language to explicitly prevent first floor apartments through the PUD process. We respectfully request your approval of these amendments to protect both the waterfront and public spaces while maintaining high development standards.
I know we talked about this a fair amount at the workshop, but are there additional questions people have? Appreciate tracking the changes that were made so that we could see those. Okay, looks like we're ready for motion.
Okay, I'll give it a go. I move to approve ordinance number 241223-A to amend, okay, help me out with that one.
15.
Thank you. To amend title 15, chapter 154 of the Code of the City of Sagatuck to amend section 154.038 C2 Downtown Waterfront Preservation District to eliminate first floor apartments as permitted and special land uses and to amend section 154.113E to clarify and revise planned unit development modifications for the C2 Downtown Waterfront Preservation District concerning qualifying public access and allowable departures, including a restriction on PUD height increase requests and to require a mechanism or legal instrument that memorializes public access preserved as part of a PUD approved.
A second.
All right. Any further, or any discussions? Okay.
Anderson?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Muncy?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Great.
Great. Okay, that takes us to 14B, which is the staff wage scale inflation adjustments on page 73. And we talked about this at our workshop.
I'll take a motion, Madam Mayor. I'd like to move to approve a 2.5% inflation adjustment to the staff step and wage scale and a one-time lump sum payment of 0.5% effective the first full payroll in January of 2025.
Any discussion questions? All right. Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Muncy?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Great. Okay, that takes us to the City Manager Performance Evaluation Criteria, which begins the memos on page 76 with the review, review form on page 77. Again, we talked about this on, at the workshop.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I think it's good to move forward with this. I would like to go back to the discussion that council member, not right now, council member Gardner and council member Clark talked about looking deeper into the goals and specific things at some, some point.
Right. I think that makes sense. I have some thoughts and we can, we can take a motion and then I can give some thoughts on sort of how this could kind of sequence out if that's helpful.
I'm moved to approve the City Manager Performance Evaluation Criteria.
Second.
So, thank you, Chris. I think that's, I think, smart. So one thing I was thinking, so Ryan, as he mentioned earlier, will have been in his job about a year in June, which coincides with the beginning of the, or end of the fiscal year, beginning of a new one. It might make sense. And I know actually council member Gardner raised the idea a while ago of, you know, doing a tighter link between planning and, and the fiscal year. And in the discussions we've had fairly recently, decided that January was a great time to kind of tee it up. It's a new calendar year, so a, a meeting similar to what we're doing soon next month. We may decide we, you know, modify that somewhat for next year. But then have the city managers review in, you know, no later than the end of June. But to have that go effectively, maybe start that in certainly no later than the beginning of May. And we can, he can provide a, his self-evaluation, which I think will be really informative to all of the council members. We can all complete the review form. We just, you know, we'll be voting on in a minute. Then, you know, can compile the, the results from that. And then as we discussed, have a closed, closed session with him. We can review kind of all of that input. So what we all put on the written forms, the self eval, we can, you know, discuss that. And then just have a discussion with him with that as background. And then, you know, following that, council can meet without him to talk about any compensation and benefit implications for their new year. So it sort of wraps up this fiscal year, takes us into next. We will, as we kind of wrap up the January planning session, we will know what the, the fiscal year '25 goals and objectives are. So that will be a nice, you know, lead in for him in the next year. And we talked, which makes great sense, I think, as we're coming up with those priorities, especially those that, you know, well, he's really responsible for all of them, pretty much, how we'll measure them. And, you know, some of them might be harder to measure, but you know, when you look at what we're doing, all of it's pretty measurable. So we can just make sure as we're having that discussion, we also talk about the metrics. So we don't have to decide that now, obviously, but I thought I would at least throw that out. We can discuss it some now if you'd like, or we can put it on a workshop as we get closer to the new fiscal, end of the fiscal year.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, I think it makes sense for us to begin to align all these activities with the budget year. It just, it just, in my mind, that's just how we should function. I would suggest, and I have to apologize to council member Stanton at the, at the workshop. There's some discussion around section 11A, which is, which is in the packet. That is simply the expectation regarding how the, how the plan should work. It is not a policy procedure around an actual evaluation process, which is what you're describing. I still think council should take an opportunity to put together a policy procedure around evaluations to tie in with the schedule change as well as with staff. So there's kind of a downflow here. So I, you know, this is not a description of a policy procedure. This is a description of what the process will look like. So I just wanted to.
Fair point.
Yep. Other questions, thoughts? Great. Great. Then we have a vote.
Anderson?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Muncie?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. Okay, and then we need to go back to.
On page twenty-four, Mayor.
Thank you. God love you.
I'll be with you too. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll get there eventually.
All right. So I know we did discuss this some during the workshop, but Ryan, you want to tee this up again?
Yes, certainly. So what before you is a resolution that would approve the submission of a grant application. For planning of access improvements and coastal stabilization in the Park Street corridor. So. Just kind of backing up and why maybe even all of this is before you in the first place. If we back up to last December. You met and, and provided some direction to staff. To, as a desirable infrastructure priority to do Park Street widening and safety conversions amongst Park Street neighbors was something that. You wanted evaluated in this fiscal year, which we're halfway through now. So as we're going into budgeting for this year, we, we reached out to our engineers and said, hey, can you put together a proposal? You know, what, what you would kind of envision that feasibility and planning and conceptual design process to look like. And so. They, they put that proposal together. We included some, some dollars in your budget. And at this point, it's budgeted for, but, you know, we haven't moved forward with that plan. It's, it's a nearly forty thousand dollar cost. So it's that, you know, we, we try to, you know, take a look at, you know, what are some large ticket items? Are there grant opportunities out there? This grant opportunity was identified several months ago. Eagle actually approached us with some opportunities and we put, I put in a project interest forum, was able to meet with Eagle recently, and they felt that this, this work on Park Street, given what we had kind of already studied before and kind of the next step that. We were looking to take with, you know, further. Public engagement really, you know, aligned well with the, the focus of the grant and really encouraged us to apply. So we've been preparing that, you know, grant application, but we need, you know, ultimately your approval to. You know, to move forward with the grant application. The. The reason why the Parks and Public Works Committee is, is referenced, you know, pretty heavily in the, the engineer's proposal, which again, you haven't, you know, approved the engineering proposal. So if you want to make changes to that process, that, that would still be an option. But, I mean, essentially your ordinance that the council passed, you know, in the summer of twenty-twenty-two, you know, created a Parks and Public Works Committee. That's really here to review and provide you with recommendations on, on capital improvements and connecting public pathways. Land acquisition opportunities for recreation. Street beautification projects. And so a lot of these, their duties really align with, you know, this particular project. And so they're, you know. I think from the very beginning with the Parks and Public Works Committee, there was a kind of a various study groups that were formed. One of them was, you know, a group of folks. From the Park Street area, kind of started an initial conversation to say, hey, we really like to see you do some further planning and feasibility. And so that's kind of, I guess, what brought us here and why the recommendations before you.
Okay, and so this is basically just, we're asking for this to approve submitting this grant application.
Correct.
Nothing further, nothing's been decided as far as what we're doing with Park Street. This is really just for a grant application to, we're approving whether we submit this. And it would help with like money towards the design engineering part of it.
Yeah, towards feasibility, planning, correct. So, yep, tonight, you're not approving the actual engineering proposal. Granted, elements of that are with, are in the draft of the, the grants application. So if we made like dramatic changes and took out a lot of the public engagement efforts that might jeopardize, you know, our success with obtaining the grant, but yes.
Chris?
Yes, and I think it's a wonderful project. Park Street has been an issue for years. Where I have my issue is we have a non-elected board making decisions about what is and in. If you turn to page twenty-eight, you look under the planning phase. The first one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine are all done with the Park and Public Works, the PSSG and other project stakeholders. And they're making sands, making plans to review enrollments and prioritize them, develop conceptual plans, make revision and enhancements to the conceptual plan, prepare a conceptual level, level budgetary cost estimate for the project. I think that's giving, again, non-elected officials choices that city council should be making. I'm not saying that the plan is wrong, but I think we need to have at least worded some way so that on all of these meetings, one through five, I believe, there should be at least two city council members there.
That's fair.
I'd prefer to have it worded some way with a study group or small group advisory group, but I just think that in this planning phase, it has to be written in there that there are two city council members. Because when you get down to the discussion of weeding out the choices, which it does all the way through, they're making the decisions. It doesn't, nothing comes to us until it's done.
Right. Madam Mayor, go ahead.
I would, I would just say that those are all fair points, but PPW is only an advisory committee. They just do like kind of the background to like, just like. The planning commission, your advisory and you, you make a recommendation to city council. We still have plenty of time to, like, listen, I, I'm not prepared to make a, you know, a decision on this. Let's go to workshop. Let's go to the next meeting. Let's, you know, we still need more time. In fact, we want another town hall. You know what I mean? Like, we have that ability to do that as a city council, but PPW is just the advisory to start the planning process and to have some of those committees. Within PPW, they have study groups and it works out really great because then you get more people from the community to be involved with those study groups. And they're just more specific where we're busy doing so many other things, they're concentrating on, you know, parks and public works.
I disagree with you. When you have words like prioritizing, developing, weeding out, making revisions, enhancements, that is way more than what a committee should have the power to do.
Gregory, you were going to say something a minute ago?
No.
Okay.
I'm just in agreement.
Okay.
Well, it feels to me that this conversation is more about what Parks and Public Works's remit is as opposed to this grant application. And I'm, I'm in favor of this and I'm in favor with the way Parks and Public Works has been operating. They've delivered so much in such a short period of time and I don't feel like this council has given up any of its authority because, as Mayor Protem clearly said, they bring all this to the council. For the council to vote up or down.
They're not bringing it to the council. They're making decisions in their committee. They're eliminating some of the choices that might be there.
Russ?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, and council member Dean is, is, I think, correct. There are two things here. One is I share the same concern that council member Peterson has. Regarding the authority that this presumably gives the Parks and Public Works Committee as well as the Park Street Study Group. My experience with this has been, and I go back to the playground, there was a lot of discussion, good discussion, good planning with a appointed council or appointed commission. With council member representative who, we didn't receive information until everything had been worked through. There had been not much update. And literally dropped to us on October, whatever date that was back in twenty-three with the final proposal. A lot of questions from public, a lot of questions from council. And we were given the choice of either saying yes or no at that point because there was a risk of losing money on the project for a grant. That was the experience I had, and I think this may be something that could take us down that same path. And I agree with council member Peterson that something of this importance. Really ought to be directed by city council, whether it's through two council members that are as part of that discussion or however we want to structure that. I just want to go through that same experience. And I think this has even got more potential for things to not go right, considering the visibility of this. And, and the financial investment.
Chris, would you be open to passing this if it had the two city council portion on, added to the planning phase?
Yes.
Okay. So.
Does that create a precedent though?
Sure.
Does that create a precedent for how the Parks and Public Works Committee operates? I mean, it feels like we're having more of a discussion about. You know, what we already approved in terms of the remit of the Parks and Public Works Committee, you know, a couple of years ago.
That's all good.
And it might be a time for that discussion.
And this is a really big project.
Huge.
It's not, it's not putting in a bench. It's not putting in a park. It, this is really important, you know, and something.
So what I don't understand is how this is different than the short-term rental task force though, because it had one council member and it was. I mean, it had, and two, I mean, it had planning commissioners, so, but who weren't on the council. And the, the short-term rental task force made a lot, I mean, did a lot of winnowing down and recommendations. I think what might be different is, I mean, certainly it was a pretty hot topic, so more people paid attention to it. So I'm wondering if it's not the structure of the process, of the structure of, you know, this. As much as the communication with council, bringing council along. I know for the short-term rental task force, I would always make, because I was on it from both planning, oh, I was on it from planning. I would make a, a report to the planning commission every month to keep people up to date. And Ryan would, you know, is the former planning director. And then city council, Lauren would make reports to city council. So I, I wonder if it's a communication, I mean, if we aren't solving for something in the past. And it's a communication issue versus a.
Like submitting reports to council on.
Yeah, just be having more fulsome reports and then those who want to. And people then would join. I mean, I know pretty much every council member. Would join some of the short-term rentals house force. It's just a thought, because that model did work.
Well, and again, you got the votes, you got the votes. What I'm saying is I think the way this is written, it gives way too much. To decision-making to a non-elected group by prior, prioritizing, developing. There are choices that are going to show up there that we won't even know about. And I just think that at least we'd have two city council members sitting in on that. And, and perhaps that should have happened with short-term rental. I don't know, because that maybe would have helped with the, with the communication, same way with the playground.
Madam Mayor, I was, I was, for the strategic planning session, I was going to mention my council comments this evening that I think one of the, and we did this before. Is that we had discussions regarding the commissions, the non-statutory committees that the city has established. And literally have a fit-to-purpose discussion around each one of these. That's a regular, that's a routine thing to do in a corporation or any kind of business. To say, okay, is this group still meeting? Is, is it fit to purpose? And I think that's an open discussion and not necessarily have that this evening regarding the Parks and Public Works Committee, but I would put that in that conversation as something I'd like to see us do. But I would agree with council member Peterson, and it sounds like council member Muncie, is that I feel this puts a little bit too much authority on non-elected members of the community. Not that their opinions are not important. But just one simple thing is who is the Park Street Study Group? I mean, that was one of those.
For me, it's not necessarily that I, it's nothing about the PPW at all. It's about giving any kind of committee that kind of authority to have that kind of, you know, the way it's worded, you know.
Totally, this is no reflection.
Change to planning commission. Would we change all of our committees?
Way you changed them to get here.
To give them less power.
You, you changed them to get to this. You can change them back. I mean, I think it comes down to, if you're saying that you gave Park and Public Works the opportunity or the option to be able to do all of this, maybe we should be looking at it. Because I don't think any of those words should apply to a non-elected group, period.
Joe, what are your thoughts?
I think that we entrust, as long as one, there's an elected official as part of the committee. I, I think if we start doubling down on every single committee we have, we're going to run out of bandwidth as a council. That's point one. You know, point two, the, you know, we are elected or, present company excluded. We are elected by the public, right, to, to participate in these committees and to, to be those representatives and to give us leverage, right? Where we can go and oversee all the different activities. So I think it makes, I don't see any reason to add. You know, more. If, if I can be blunt, we either trust the council member that's representing the city council as part of these committees or we don't. And if we do, we should trust that they're going to bring them, bring the information to us. Restructure the proposal if you don't like the way it's written to get some of the decision criteria up here, but I, I don't know, it just seems like a lot of overhead to start plugging into these committees if we start doubling up on the council representation. That's just my own opinion.
I mean, I don't think anybody wants to join me on the wildlife committee.
Little difference, little difference in importance.
Yeah, exactly.
I will go back to the short-term rental task force though, because that's a huge issue. We had two representatives from planning and one from council. And I, I mean, and maybe, you know, accepting you from this conclusion, Chris, but from what I think this council or the last year's council and. View and the planning commission and residents felt like that was a very successful process. And I think part of it was community engagement. Involving the public and then making sure there were, and I, I think the reports we've been giving have been pretty detailed. And then just, you know, if we aren't getting the kinds of information we want from council members on. The different committees, just asking more questions. And we also are always welcome to join meetings or watch them. And, and then bring questions back.
Right. I know this is going to have a lot of, you know, let alone a study group that will look into it and help with this process. I know they're planning on having, you know, like town hall meetings about it. We did it with the SDR group and that was very well attended. This will be another thing for Park Street. The residents along Park Street will want that. They'll want their voice to be heard. And I know we'll be able to do that. So I'm confident in like going forward with this grant application.
And if I'm not comfortable, that's mine. I mean, everybody else can move forward however they'd like.
Right, well, then let's call the question.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, just reading again through this, the engineering proposal from dated March twenty-eighth from Mr. Moxey. The, the motion itself is not necessarily the adoption of this exact, because that can be rediscussed.
It's a grant application.
And I think that's where we need to go back and discuss with Mr. Moxey some of the concerns. And I, I share some of council members Peterson's concerns about the way this is. I, I mean, the more that I look at this, the less comfortable I am with having non-elected members of the community have responsibility for some of the items in here. And I'd also be interested in the superintendent of DPW, his perspective on this. He's probably the one continuous person within this process. I'd be curious to see.
And he's the head of our Parks and Public Works Committee.
A lot of this is infrastructure, which is.
Right.
Our responsibility.
So from a staff perspective, or Ryan, anything you want to add?
No, I mean, as it relates to council's desire and how you want, you know, your committees to be structured with your membership and, and what you want to see come out of your committees. I mean, that's a decision that, that you have to make a decision on what you're comfortable with. Except for purposes of today, it's approving a grant application and, and concepts, applying for grant dollars to do this, do this work, the actual approval of an agreement with, with FLEES and what is that. Exact process in the end looks like if there's, you know, a desire for some additional touch points. If we get the grant, we're going to come to you and say, hey, all right, we have grant dollars. We're going to ask you now to fund this, this engineering proposal. Would you like any changes before we move it forward? So you will have another opportunity to look at it, assuming we, we get some grand dollars.
Okay.
Or you want to move forward.
This is to move forward with the grant.
Correct.
If we get the grant, we could go back to this language if we, if we thought we needed to.
Yep, yep. I just would, with the caveat that I wouldn't take a ton out and that some of what we're applying for is this, this community engagement effort is a part of our grant application. But if you're going to add to it, I don't, I don't think they're going to have concerns.
And if there's.
I didn't think about that until Chris brought it up. And the wording does, it does seem a little bit authoritative. And some, something I think about when it comes to authoritative is using our employees and our time and our resources without us knowing, you know, I mean, how much time is Scott spending with folks? That are asking questions and they're doing research from residents and things like that. And how much time is, you know, things like that. So. But, but yeah, so like, like I said, I, I'm on board for going for it and, and saying yes, just so that we can get this grant going.
Great.
When we do get the grant, if so, then we can go back and say, hey, is this how we want to run this?
Okay. Jamie, let's take the vote.
Motion.
Oh, we.
I thought we had the.
You had the.
We, well, we did.
Oh, we don't. Okay, I need a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Oh, yeah.
I'd like a motion to approve resolution number two-four-one-two-two-three-b, approving the submission of a water resources division grant application. For planning of access improvements and coastal stabilization in the Park Street corridor.
Second.
Now we'll take a vote.
Anderson?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Muncie?
Yes.
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Okay. That gets us to public comments. Second public comments. This can be on anything. Anyone, no one in the room, anyone online like to make a public comment? All right. Did we, I know we got an email on chickens. Did, that wasn't in the packet, though, was it? You didn't get an email on chickens. Okay.
Okay.
Pardon?
I didn't either.
Oh, okay. I...
I got the, I got the chicken email.
Okay.
Or to us, we can...
Yeah, we can, we'll include it in the next...
Should I just brief the council quickly? I mean, or should we just, we, we have a constituent that's interested in us exploring allowing chickens.
We can get that in a future packet. All right. Council comments. Joe?
Well, end of the year. As a resident, I want to thank everyone on the council for all the hard work they've, they've done this year. It's been a, as with many years, there's a lot of challenges and friction. And hopefully, with the holidays coming up, we can, we can set some of this aside and enjoy time with our families and friends. I want to thank the staff and all the committees for the hard work they've done as well. I think everybody's really doubled down and focused on doing what they all believe is in the best interest of the city. So I want to thank you also for supporting Planning's recommended motion today. There's a lot of hard work that went behind that. And again, I want to thank Planning for all the dedication that they put in to make sure that our town continues on, on a good, solid footing. So with that, I want to wish everyone happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy New Years, and hope you can enjoy some time.
Thanks, Joe.
I also, I'll piggyback on the staff. We have such a wonderful staff. I'm very, very happy with the work that Ryan, you've been doing, Jamie, and Scott at DPW, all of our employees. We are very, very fortunate to have all of them. I hope that everybody has a wonderful, wonderful Christmas holiday, New Year season. But I also want to remind everyone that our stores are going to be open here in town tomorrow. And if you need, need any last-minute shopping or anything, some of them will close a little bit early, like maybe three, four o'clock. But please support our downtown businesses when you're thinking about your last-minute gifts. No need to drive out of town. Just come right here downtown and, and support our small businesses. And, yeah, also, of course, we're looking forward to fireworks on New Year's, I understand, at Coral, Coral Gables.
It's like, boom.
I'm seeing that advertised right now. So on the Coral Gables Facebook page. So I was just curious about that. And, but, yeah, I'm looking forward to our upcoming year and our upcoming strategic planning meeting. I appreciate us all taking the time to, you know, make our survey a little bit longer. I appreciate that. You know, I asked for that last year. And, and I look, looking forward, working with all of you, Holly, and Lauren, Scott, and our, and Chris, Joe. I've enjoyed sitting next to you since you've been here. And we're just really lucky to live in our town. I really am very fortunate. And, and Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Merry Christmas to all.
Um, I don't have any prepared remarks, but I, I just want to echo some of the things that Holly said about, just, we had a really productive year, and I think we should all be very proud of all we've accomplished. I know some of those items go way back that were on the list, and we, we finally got some of that stuff accomplished. And I, I love to see, you know, that we were able to do so much. And, and I know sometimes that we argue with each other, and that's what makes everything better, because we, we get to the points that we need to be made, and it's all for the betterment of our communities. So I'm looking forward to a new year, and Merry Christmas to everybody.
Thank you. Just one item, a surprise Councilmember Muncy didn't mention, the Christmas Carol concluded last night after eight performances and a number that was given on the stage, which was, just blew me away. Through the tickets, as well as through donations, they are going to be donating $24,000 to Christian Neighbors. And that's just amazing. And Janice, I'm not sure if she's Willoughford, but Janice and Steve Willoughford, Steve Willoughford's been doing this 38 years, and I talked with him about maybe getting to 50. He said, I don't know if my wife will let me, but this is an institution for this town. And I know there's a lot of folks involved. My wife was in the play this year. I know Councilmember Muncy. And, and I get a little wistful about it, because I can remember when we didn't have this. And it's something that, if it were to go away, would be missed immensely. It's part of our fabric. And not, it's not going anywhere, but I'm just saying, I'm starting, you know, there's some thought going ahead.
Don't pray, Chris.
There, there's, there's some thought going ahead about how this continues. And anyway, it's just very proud to be a part of it. And $24,000 to Christian Neighbors is, is quite, quite a substantial investment. So, and do want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year as well. And I'm going to mention that comment I was going to make is that I would like to have an item at our strategic planning session for non-statutory boards and commissions have a fit-to-purpose conversation. I think that's something we should regularly do.
Did you want, I'll sneak with this.
I just wanted to mention, thank you for your compliments for Marley. I will not be playing Marley. That was a very big challenge. But I did want to mention, in the past, we've given Christian Neighbors $10,000. This is, we raised second prices this year, and, and we were, and we also got a couple of private donations that helped bring it up to that $24,000. We're very proud of that. We helped to solidify our organization by going under the umbrella of Christian Neighbors. So we will be working with Christian Neighbors in the future. So we won't be going anywhere. So don't worry about that.
Chris? I'd like to thank the staff, too. It's just been amazing working with them since I came on. And I appreciate the back and forth on different things. And I'm just going to use my authority to appoint myself as the second person to go to all those meetings. And I'm so glad nobody said this, because I want to. I'll see you all next year.
Oh, there you go. So again, a shout out to staff. In my kind of recapping awesome stuff that happened this year, it wasn't a council thing, it was a staff thing. We, we started early voting, and that was huge and a big lift for our clerk and deputy clerk. So I want to acknowledge that. Congratulations to the people who were reappointed to the boards, and to CJ, who's no longer on for being the vice chair of planning. And, yeah, Merry Christmas. It's, I'm really honored and I'm proud to work with all of you. And I hope you have great holidays and see you all in January.
I'd like a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Us.
Getting adjourned.
Merry Christmas.